Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome.
When I recognize it, you're watching.
The honor of getting to welcome you back to what could be our final, who knows? We keep adding meetings. I'm feeling a little sense of loss that this may be our last time together working on this, so I'm offering that up. But I just wanted to have the chance, on behalf of the Board of Education, to welcome you. I'll be totally honest, I've already spent two hours with these guys and I'm pretty excited at what you're going to see. And I'm really excited to see what you think, because this whole entire process as we were talking has been so... we've learned so much from everybody here, so I thank you for that, because it has really added lots to this process. And I see all your work in some of these images and ideas that we're about to see today. So I hope you're as excited as I am for that, and we'll have a great time. Our schedule is to work, work, work. We have a board presentation at 6:00, where we have to sit behind those microphones unfortunately, so we will move over there at that point for the presentation. Then there's a short little board meeting, and then we'll have some more board discussion around it. You're of course welcome and invited to stay the entire night. Sometimes we go until 10 or 11, it's pretty exciting. You can have a presentation on CTE tonight and other exciting things, so stay tuned for your five, six hour meeting you've now come to. Going without further ado, welcome, thank you for being here at Apollo. And John, keep going.
Thanks, Dennis. We do have a jam-packed time together, because we have to get through... we're hoping to get through a presentation and feedback by 5:30. Now, that might slip to quarter to 6:00. And then we're going to ask for volunteers, again, to help us make a presentation to the school board at 6:00. So I will be... so think about it, you know who you are. When I ask for volunteers, please come forward and we'll craft a quick presentation. We're going to use pretty much this PowerPoint as... for the bones of it, like we did last time. So I think you'll find it fun and engaging. And so, from 6:00 to 6:30, then we are presenting this in a more condensed way to the board. And then, at 6:30, then there will be the questioning, there'll be questions during the workshop itself. So let's just jump right into it. As Dennis said, this is the last scheduled workshop that... it's not really a workshop, it's more of a presentation. In the past, we have had to create all sorts of things and design the high schools. This is more of a presentation, a review, and we're going to have some feedback. But, review, we're going to give you an overall timeline update, program update, and then the two design proposals in this order, Apollo first, and then new high school, ask you for some table feedback, and then prep for the school board presentation. Any questions on our agenda? Seems pretty simple. So I'm going to just go into the timeline. This is what we've been up to. This is our kind of overall, these are the times we've met, all of these times, from workshop one to the community presentation. I'm thinking of it as our lucky seven workshop. And so this is about coming to closure on the process of conceptual design. I feel like we have completed, and we're in really good place to move forward. As we move forward, this is where we are right now, this orange line, dash line. Just going back, soon, sometime in the spring, and it's 60 outside, so it's going to be soon. There's not a date yet set here, but soon the school board will meet and set the referendum amount and the scope, the total scope and amount. So that's coming up soon. Now, to get there, you know, as I said, we're here, we're looking at a November referendum, I think that's fairly common knowledge, but there's a fall referendum. And there's a state review and comment piece that needs to be submitted June, July. So that process needs to be in place for the next couple, next couple months. Sometimes before here that board vote will happen. It's likely that we'll be doing some programming, some additional programming in the fall. This is the timeline for the referendum, and we celebrate. Woo-hoo! And we're... we have an initial design done by the end of December, and then we have price points and design development, and this is all kind of the design phase through here, construction documents. We're looking at three separate, and this is for the new high school, we're looking at three separate bid packages, so getting site work, a site package out, and footings and foundation, footings and foundations, and then the bulk of the bidding occurs here. We're looking at a construction timeline from early summer 2016, this is for the new, to occupancy in 2018. So that's the timeline of the new construction. Apollo will be similar, it's more complex because of the multiple phases and the multiple renovations. That will come, that will... that information will come out a little bit later, but this is the, this is the new, the new high school timeline. Any questions on this? Does this make sense? Yep. And we're doing multiple bidding to get it occupied by '18. Yes?
What is that orange square that's in the... above... yeah, that one.
Estimates.
Okay.
So these are estimating moments when the construction manager will estimate the work. So we have three of those moments in our timeline. We do have a construction manager on board now. Which is Pat? Pat Oberon?
Oh.
Please stand up, come forward, he's going to be, he's going to be your friend and ours from ICS, we're pleased to have you on the team, Pat. Welcome. Yeah, he likes to hide, apparently. When we started, I think the very first thing we shared was this purpose, our purpose of coming together. This was our purpose, for working together as a community, to co-create a clear and compelling vision of the future for St. Cloud area high school learners, and to align educational programs and physical design of facilities with this vision. So, at the end of the evening, we are going to check this box. We think we, this is what we have done together, and it's pretty amazing, we've come through quite a journey. We've grounded our work in the mission of the school district, we've done it in partnership with the community, we focused on the future. We've done it, I think, grounded with the values that the, that the school district has in their strategic plan. We said we would ground our work in the strategic plan. We've offered multiple differing perspectives, we've created common goals. We all, or think about all of the exercises we've done that have built on common ground. Our highest hopes were, again, that continues to inspire us around inclusive environments, visionary, sustainable, and of course, community with that number one, with community. Our shared vision, inviting student-centered designs that integrate environmental community and technological resources to cultivate a love of learning in all students. By celebrating beauty, function, and sustainability, we build on a tradition of excellence that serves as a source of pride for student, staff, and the community. I'm struck with how many students have been participating in this process continuously. I'm sad there's not a lot of students here tonight, but I understand it's spring. I'm sure you'll share on the design, and you'll see it on the website. We've understood what's happening with teaching and learning, and where the district is going from a curriculum standpoint, what they want, it's all built on the strategic plan. I'm just going to kind of go through this. Last time, when we met, we designed, we had a two-day workshop that we focused on creating learning communities, right? And then, and then whole school, a new tech and, or a new high school solution and Apollo. And we talked about learning communities with these attributes. And we've been updating and working on the program. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Meg. Do you want to use that? Yes, she does.
Testing.
And I can just keep clicking from here.
I have to turn it off.
Meg Parsons on our program update.
So what I'm going to do is I'm just going to talk about what's included in both of the diagrams that you're going to see tonight. Just a little click. The suspense is killing us.
Would you do that?
If you remember, these are some of the design parameters that we started with. We started with the idea that the design capacity will be 1,800 students at both high schools, that at approximately 200 square feet per student, that equals 360,000 square feet. This is particularly for the new building. Apollo is what it is in some ways, it's an existing building, so we've got a different square footage, you know, parameter there, 85 teaching stations.
All right, so in the learning communities that we spent some time with last time, here's what's included. We're going to have general learning spaces, these are kind of classrooms or classroom equivalents. In the new school, we're going to look at science being incorporated in these learning communities. We've got 10 specialized science labs. We have both medium group rooms and small group rooms. These will be used for a variety of different uses, they'll be available for pull-out, for regular ed. They'll also be used for kids that need maybe smaller classes for special ed, or some one-on-one, or some project work, group work. We had a meeting earlier this week with the district on special ed level three, which is self-contained special ed. And the concept is to put these kids within the learning community so that they're not separated from the other learners. They will have self-contained classrooms in some cases. Collaborative learning space, staff collaboration space, and teaching and learning material storage. So if you look down at the bottom, and I'm sorry, I'm pushing the buttons at the bottom, we have approximately 110,000 square feet, or 30% of the building, with 70 teaching stations in the learning communities. In addition to these, we have studio spaces that are specialized, CTE-type spaces, art spaces. We have outlined some of them here. The media commons, you could also call this the media center. The media is not necessarily centralized, it has a viquepis throughout the building, so we end up calling it the media commons. We have indicated that there's probably a graphic computer lab, that there's probably an engineering lab for Project Lead the Way robotics. These spaces, we have larger spaces with big question marks after them. Currently, you have auto welding, you've got construction, you do not have culinary arts. This is going to be part of the ongoing discussion that happens, so that we understand what programmatically needs to happen, what education needs to happen in these buildings.
Question?
Yes.
So we have three CTE spaces for basically three items. How much space is that if there's 26,000 square feet for all of that? How much would be dedicated to the CTE spaces? And how many of those would be, well, you're going to have how many workstation feet?
These are typically about 4,800 square feet each, these big guys, they just take up a lot of space, so basically just three rooms. This one takes up about 2,400 square feet, but they're like three rooms. Right now, that amount of square footage is showing three spaces. Now, if, when we further the discussion, if auto is something that is not necessarily what's desired, because it's offered at community college or whatever, the space allocation could be for something else there.
So if you took off what you were thinking for media commons, the two art labs, the computer lab, how much space is left if we're working on 26,000 or 7% of the building? How much space would be dedicated to that? Do you know, Ann, or can we find out?
I'm not clear on the question.
Well, I'm just wondering, if 26,000 square feet is only 7% of the building, and eight teaching stations to me means eight teachers out of ten will be working. So I, it looks like three teachers on the CTE, so at this point, we're looking at just three teaching areas for CTE.
We are looking at, right now, we're looking, what we have outlined are the spaces that you have currently at Apollo, which would be auto construction as big spaces. We're adding an additional space, the culinary arts space, but it might not be culinary arts, it might be something else. We're suggesting that there are three CTE-type spaces. Now, if you choose a program that's not as large as welding, auto welding, this could be two spaces, so this could be four spaces. Do you see what I'm saying?
I do, I'm just looking at the 26,400 square feet is not really much room, I don't think for all.
It's a pretty, pretty, pretty big portion of the building. So let me keep going. The, as we look at the diagrams, some of these labs, for example, art might be in some of the learning communities as well. Music and performance, we're talking about a 700-seat auditorium, which includes support spaces, and we're looking at a music suite with choir band and orchestra. And if you think about this building, currently there are not these three spaces in this building. So there's going to be, we're going to see something in Apollo that's going to change that. So this is approximately 19,000 square feet, or 5% of the building, and three teaching stations.
Can I ask you a question, where the 700-seat came from?
That's a good question. There was this idea of equity between the two buildings, and the current auditorium here at Apollo is 700 seats.
I spoke with people at the Penn, and they really suggested larger, based on, they said we would go on a regular basis, there's not a venue that would have the, what is the, 800? You know, to get that thousand seat venue is not available, and this would be a great opportunity, they would love to speak to it at some point.
I did not work for the bare mall. I didn't ask you to, you know, I just, I mean, not as...
And honestly, we just had this discussion, we had this steering committee meeting, so I think that this is, this is the appropriate time to bring it up. It's just square footage. The point was made by Pat, which is absolutely accurate, is as you progress to a larger auditorium, you're going to end up with a balcony, which has other financial implications. But I, you know, I think that we need to resolve that, but the current sensibility was that there was equity between the two buildings, and that's by the 700 seat.
Well, the community was coming back to me saying that they have a great deal of information they would love to share with you in regards to that.
All right. Dennis, can you help with that?
I got appointed to do that.
I can jump in just a little bit. One of our theater folks explained just the opposite, stating that our theater was too large, meaning for several of our concerts and plays, we have, we struggle with filling that capacity for those individual performances. So Dave would actually like it to be a little smaller, a little more...
And so I was tasked to connect with all of the participants in music and drum at the multiple schools, including the middle schools and the community resources, and do a quick audit of the seats available at both high schools and the community, so we'll get that in there too.
Okay.
Question?
I'm sorry.
The question's about the program line.
God, nobody asked.
The cancer manager.
This is from, I was thinking of all the theaters in front of the topic, I like the way, like Apollo, you can shut perhaps with it, and we have a top section that's kind of nice, but it's adaptable like that, I don't know if that's what we can do. This is from, I'm not theater music, but we do have gala, we're, my current have a gala, and we like small space here to hold it in here, and it would be nice to have the theater that would adapt, or a larger, and then equal to a smaller, there's some really good things, but I don't know what kind of options are, just something to...
Okay, on to activities and PE. In the diagrams, you'll see a three-station gym. What that means is you've got three basketball courts, the center court is your competition court, and so for games, you pull down bleachers on both sides. You also have an auxiliary gym, an eight-lane pool. There'll be down in that area, flexible team room or classroom that you can use for help, concessions in school store, fitness center, which would include both aerobic and strength, weight training, a wrestling room, lockers, that'd be two PE and two competition locker rooms, that would include trainer's room, and then storage. And this is approximately 65,400 square feet, or 18% of the building, and four teaching stations. A question?
So, the auxiliary gym, is that where the dance studio would be? Is that where the, where the both schools have large dance teams, obviously, for that? Is it the dance studio, or you say that's the fitness center would be where we have it?
So I don't know the answer to that right now, I think that's part of the programming piece that will come out. Typically, the aerobic space is probably roughly 1,500 square feet. Some, in some places, they do a sprung floor in that. I don't know if that's large enough for a dance team, but that would be certainly some of the programming pieces that would have to come out in the...
So when do you gather feedback? Because last session, that came up actually from multiple people in the room, so when, is there feedback allowed tonight at a certain point in the...
Certainly, we're going to, we're actually asking a little feedback tonight. The, what's going to happen, what we're looking at here is what's the square footage, you know, overall? What's the general arrangement of the spaces and how big they are? So for example, if, and again, this goes back to the equity between the two buildings, you know, how are we going to make Apollo and the new high school available? The process will be, and what we're looking at is starting this in August, September, is to have groups that are going to be talking about specifically what's going to happen, for example, in this area. So that will involve teachers, it may involve community members, I think that that's still cut up in the areas to how those are going to be formed.
So if you don't use that auxiliary gym for dance, what is that considered? Explain that to me, I don't want to miss that.
Well, there are a couple things, like if you have a big volleyball game, you may have, you know, more than, maybe more than the three gyms for that, or gymnastics, for example, might use that gym, I mean, basketball. Again, those are, those are, those are things we need to figure out.
Could it be used today?
It could be used for dance, it would have a gym floor in it, though not necessarily a sprung floor.
So I don't want to take a lot of time, but if someone could look at a list of all the varsity sports that is offered at tech, one of which would be dance team, so that is a sport, then just making sure as we move along in the process that all of the sports are accommodated and taken care of in the plan.
Yep.
I would just recommend that highly, that we look at a list of every sport.
The next part of the process is going to involve more than my two principals, one, two. Our definitely going to involve the principals and their staff and their teams, so what we need to do is make sure that we've got everything covered, all the sports, yep.
Andrea, can you comment on that, because I too have concerns.
Yeah, well, we were doing the auxiliary gym, I just get excited thinking that we might have four gyms, I'd like to have five, but...
I want to say expert.
I'm certain there's no gymnastics team, it's been told to mention that. But with the auxiliary gym, I mean, there's so many things, you know, practices, we're holding practices sometimes till eight, nine o'clock at night. So by having an extra gym, you can work that in, to work in the gymnastic, or the dance team, because the dance team, they, they need and want the gym floor, because that's where they compete, on a gym floor. And that's why it's so important to be able to have that, then be able to practice, doing something like that. But I know they like their mirrors too, because then they can watch themselves as they're, you know, being such a...
And it's not, and it's not just the mirrors, it's the floor. You can do a four-minute dance on a gym floor, but when you're practicing, it's kind of like, you know, I just finished reading the boys in the boat, and you know, it's like hours and hours of practice, but really for only 23 minutes of actual...
I'm going to move us, Andrea, because I know John's getting anxious. But we will, yes, we will, I can tell. But we are going to ask for feedback, so these are the comments we'd love to have you put down on the paper. All right, adults and support spaces, this would include the commons with cafeteria, it would include administration, kitchen, receiving, storage. This accounts, this is 36,000 square feet, or 10% of the building. Now, if you've been keeping track, we have accounted for 70% of the building up to these numbers. This is kind of the net program square footage. In addition to this, we've got all of the, what I call the underwear of the building, the toilets, the corridors, the walls, you know, all the mechanical, electrical, who needs those? We've got mechanical engineers, right? But it's all the stuff that keeps the building running.
I think Pat is a mechanical engineer.
Okay. All right. I think we are done, but again, I will be around, and I will also take comments kind of on the side if you want, later this evening.
Do we have the outdoor space with the athletic?
We will show you that in diagram form.
And do we have some, like the outdoor spaces, the athletics, the cost on that, and really maintenance on those?
We do not have that tonight.
Can we get those?
We're going to be engaging our construction manager in looking at all this stuff, it's not available currently, not today.
Okay.
Is there a question?
Yeah.
I mentioned this, excuse me, about the second workshop, not even the dark group, but the more I think about it, the more I think it's important to think about the fact that we have three colleges in the area that all prepare teachers, and we have many students that come into these buildings, and the district has always been very accommodating. And I'm wondering if maybe it would be a good idea to plan for that. It wouldn't take a lot of extra space, maybe some conference rooms, a few, not very many, and maybe a few offices. And I would envision the faculty being joint faculty between the district and the colleges. And one of the advantages, or two of the advantages to the district that are already happening is that you have a lot more adults in the building. And secondly, you have first choice on hiring, and that already is happening, but I think that that could be available. And my suggestion would be that, that, all of that probably shouldn't be extra cost to the district, but it might be worthwhile to go to the, to the state or to the colleges and ask if they would be willing some kind of grant or something that would help this to happen, because they're great at that, also.
It's also my hope that as we look at these diagrams of buildings, particularly with the meeting room, or the small group rooms, and the staff collaboration spaces, that there will be the availability of space for, if it's not that, maybe something else for professionals to come into the building and work with kids.
And I think the learning community model supports other adults and interns and places for them. When you have teaching and learning going on in every square inch of those learning communities, there are places for multiple people to be, and it really supports that model. One more question, then we have to do the design presentation.
Yeah, I have a question. When I'm asked about this, and a lot of the people that I know are senior citizens, and they know the history of tech, and they say, "Well, back in the 50s and 60s is when they built it for, so you could get entry skill levels, so if you did go to college, you have skill welding, whatever." If we're only spending about 7%, even with the cafeteria on that, if students are not going to college after they leave high school, are we training them for anything at all? And with the minimal spaces for CTE, isn't that going to add to the problem in the community with their growing numbers for the poor kids? I just checked the website in Minnesota, and our percentages just went up again.
So I think that's a great... So I think that's a great comment. I think it's, you know, I don't know what to do with that tonight. So I think it's a question that you need to...
I'm relating, that's what I'm hearing from the community is, you know, where are these kids? What kind of training? I heard one comment that almost sounds like this is a prep school. You know, with all the sports, everything is great, but what, what are we training the kids that don't go on? What are they gonna do?
Thank you. I think we've heard the perspective. And, and certainly we've toured schools that integrate, integrate those programs into the heart of the school in Alexandria. So this is a similar approach to that.
I'm just trying to decide, I don't know what to tell people. I have no idea.
We'll go through that. Thank you. Would you like to jump into the presentation? Cool. Just a quick review. This is where we're gonna start with a quick review, because we're about ten minutes behind. This is what we shared last time, just a sort of, a little analysis of the site. I'm not gonna go over it again, but we have a great site and a site that can create a relationship between the city park and the new property. And David, come and join me. This is, remember David Monson Becker? He shared this presentation last time. And we're gonna, kinda too manic to go quick. This was the overall aerial. We had delineation of some of the natural areas, priorities for conservation, and we gave you a choice, right? We gave you a choice between woodland quarry, a school that faces the beautiful woods to the north, and is tucked up into that, that edge and creates that synergy, or the wetlands, a, a school that was located next to the wetlands to the, to the east. And we, at this point, we had lots of questions about entry drives, et cetera, where we're coming in and out. We're gonna have David talk about that, but, because I think we have some better resolution on that. And so we asked you to weigh in and you, you couldn't decide, you had no idea at the time. But it was pretty amazing, the preference, right? Because I think together we've created a sort of shared consciousness around this, around this project. And so this is one of the things that sort of, for me, comes through. And so we felt really good about developing this approach, this, this quarry woodlands option. And we also presented Apollo, and we, you, you gave us some table talk, and we had great feedback on all those things. So those, those pieces are documented. We have ten sheets of paper for each site, like it's full of your comments, it's, they're not forgotten. They will be carried forward into the next, next round. And we did have some issues around buses and staff parking and circulation on Apollo that we talked about. So with that, that's kind of the summers, that look familiar? Everybody remember that? So now we've been kind of developing those two things for time. And we're gonna start with Apollo this time. And David, I'm gonna ask you to start with the site. And Scott Criner will join us with the presentation as well.
Okay, thanks. So after taking all the considerations and the comments that you all gave, and everyone's been working with the steering committee and different folks on, we came up with this scheme, keeping, trying to address the issues with buses, circulation, parking, access down the side. So the main move is this great kind of central access point, bringing people into the center. Visitor drop off and parking here in the front, student parking on these sides, and then staff and bus circulation here. One of the things we were looking at is trying to get people to use this great access relationship, pulling people from across the highway down into the space and into the central part of the school. Buses could come in, circulate through here, drop off, park, get ready to depart later. Students can access this through the space and in through this space. Leaving the tennis courts where they are and leaving, and fields up here where they are, we realign some of the baseball and softball fields and the soccer field. And we think that we got it to fit quite nicely in here. That's, that's gonna hit, it was a quick, short look, but...
We know we have some challenges around, you know, working out the final details of buses, and there's some conflict still we haven't worked out. It is a conflict with having wine, it's a conflict with having the light there, and that's the only light. So, but, so we're, we're gonna do, it's not finished, but it's in a good place. And we're gonna ask you to comment too, as we do the table talk.
I'm gonna just have a...
We need to go quick. I'm gonna ask you a whole question for the end. Okay.
Go through the axon, you'll see it in a little bit better perspective in three D.
Okay? So...
So this slide is just basically showing some images and descriptive word about maybe starting to develop a story around Apollo and how it can start to influence some of the spaces and some of the architecture and what happens inside the building as well as what happens outside the building. We know the story of Apollo, the space program, but there was a reason they chose Apollo as because of the Greek god and his, his far-reaching, sort of innovative visionary character to him. He's a god of, he always cared of music and as well as an arrow, sort of that far-reaching visionary aspect to him, as well as he was the guy that brings the sun across the sky every day. So he's multi-dimensional.
And a real sense of exploration, so which you can't help make that connection between learning and exploring.
So these words visionary, sense of, you know, sense of vision, mission, innovation. We know that it probably happens within the school, but, but one of the things that we wanted to do is how do we start to see that through the facility as well? Because right now the facility is kind of, it's a bunch of layers from the outside to the inside, it's going from layer to layer, and it's really not celebrated. So there's probably some great work that's happening inside the school, but we really wanna say, "Well, why don't we see that?" And we wanna see that innovation, we wanna see students learning, we wanna see what they're creating. So what...
We took another passive, active diagram. And we sort of fine tuned it to how we had before, based on what we've got.
It's this diagram, you know, just real briefly, it's a bunch of boxes on this, in the existing footprint. The boxes are reflective of what make roster is what we know today as the, the building program. Basically, student commons, we, we moved the student commons to where existing courtyard spaces, and what that allows us to do is being entry from east and west as well as the north. From the north, we then, if we're able to move the existing commons, we can create more food court, extend the kitchen in that space so that we can alleviate some of the congestion of students. We've taken the, and expanded the fine art space, and we know we need to add three more spaces to support the fine arts. And we've also taken advantage of that twenty-five foot wide locker quarter that we have now, because we're gonna distribute lockers in the rest of the facility, that we can use that as some of the fine art space and then the expansion is not as big as we...
The additional space is admin?
Admin, some fine arts, and an acceleration. Those are the, those are beyond the footprint, and everything else fits within the footprint. And we've got essentially learning communities, so one, two, three, four, two, five, six, seven, eight learning communities distributed throughout the space. And each of those learning communities has staff vibration spaces, small group rooms, medium group rooms, like I said, and then formal learning spaces, so that kids can flex and move in and out of the different jungle learning spaces.
The sense of the ability to become a CTC kind of focused academy maybe, essentially there. There's lots of big spaces sprinkled throughout the whole school that can support hands-on activities. You know, names at this point, I think, you know, we're naming things flexibly. I don't think we've landed on specific programs in all of those things, but we have a variety of big spaces to support hands-on learning in that CTC area.
And then just basically in the center, we'll, we'll show a little bit more detail of this, is this idea about a, a heart to Apollo. And that's what we're finding, discovery center. So that's the space that we're seeing in right now. You can see it's, it's being utilized tonight, but during the school days, it maybe could have a better use, a little more utilized for, for kids, that idea of all projects you can waste, um, robotics, high-end science labs, good afternoon.
So you've noted, I think you're up the process, that Apollo has good bones, and Apollo can be reconfigured or renovated and develop a new character. And so what we're gonna share, we promised you renderings, right? Two renderings or renderings of each, of each project. So the first one you're gonna see is of the discovery center in Apollo and a renovation. And so without further ado, I think it's the next one up.
So as we said, this was, this is the space we're staying in right now. The tall space right here is the space in the middle where it drops down on the stairs and then that ramp there, as well as it pops up and has some clear story like in that space. But what we think is that, that's gonna be flexible, you know, lab type space, it's robotics can happen in the middle there, project can wait, anything that can happen in the middle is, is flexible. Then what we have is like this space here could be maybe a large flex lab. And so that's, these labs off to the sides are labs that can open up and then flex and expand into that center space. So that, now you're bringing, again, project, hands-on learning, discovery, all that stuff is not happening inside the box, it's now outside, bring it out. This is all open. So now it's not, these little doors, it's half that space is open. So as you're walking along the hallway, it opens and expands.
It might always be transparent, so you can see in, you can see into the learning activities. So it completely changes the character inside, I think, as you have, as you have offered. Next one? You're gonna keep moving? So the next image we wanted to share with you because, you know, Apollo already is a facility and it already looks like something from the outside. We thought it would be important that there, as, as, as we sort of move through the project and rebrand Apollo, that it have an exterior move. And, and someone had mentioned, "Well, can, can we do something that gets your attention from a little bit further away from the site to sort of bring people into the site?" And so we've chosen to create another image of new welcoming the entry, which looks like this. And we're using a form that as we infill the courtyard to expand the commons, we create a signature piece that becomes the new Apollo.
So I'm not sure where, you guys came in, came in the admin side or, or the main entrance, but you know, it's kind of like this concrete jungle out there, right? It's the walls, you know, it's concrete all the way, wall to wall, it's, it doesn't feel very inviting, right? And as John's mentioned, there's, there was also this lack of this architectural element that suggests where entry is as well. So as you drive along, okay, there's an entry, is that the main entry? No, but you don't really know, because there's really nothing that suggests where the entry is until you get there and it's obvious. Okay, that's the main entry, that's Apollo. But what we wanna do is as you come over that, that bridge on fifteen, that, okay, I know where entry is. There's this big element that, that happens here at night is this glowing box that symbolizes this, you know, the heart and welcoming place to Apollo. So that's, that's main entry. We also wanted, as we talked about, sort of turning Apollo inside out, you know, because everything is very internal, right? And as you go along, it's very small punched openings. Well, we're not gonna be able to put glass on the entire exterior, but there may be some opportunities to open up some of Apollo. As John mentioned, it's, it's great bones and it allows us to really do that pretty easily. So the idea of maybe opening up the corner at entry, so now it's, now it's not the, you're not framed by concrete and brick walls that you see into some of the learning that happens as you enter the building.
It's maybe a special lab in the corner that features some, you know, some exploratory program. And the other side is admin, so it opens up and becomes transparent for the community. And you're an open welcoming place that invites you to be in.
So this is a rendering of the main entry.
The main entry from the west.
The west side.
West side, so from the...
On the east side, it would be somewhat similar, because you would be, remember the diagram, you enter in the same location from the east side, and we were talking about, David talked about it, sort of that positive, it's all the activities. So as you come in, you're coming in basically the same way.
Isn't that where the space capsule is?
Space capsule from the west.
I'm on the west side, yeah.
Yeah, the space capsule is like right here right now.
So you're gonna create this atrium and then suspend the space capsule and people, everybody locked up.
It's, that's the, that's the initial idea, to honor that which is there and to celebrate it.
Yeah, is everybody see that's a space capsule now?
Yeah.
In space.
Right here.
We've heard it's heavy, but that's okay.
We heard it's, we heard it's heavy. Four people have told us it's really heavy on.
How tall is that atrium at the top of that building? Is that like forty feet?
So this might be another eighty feet above the existing.
Might be happening as much as the ceilings now, but something that, and actually, the footprint is actually quite small enough. If you go to the courtyard, it's not that big of a space, so it's more of a, more of a vertical element that, that attracts people, maybe, you know, and that, the capsule is a sign, it's a symbol of the change.
It's a great, great contrast, it's, we have this long linear building that's, especially at night, it's kind of dark. Then you have this glowing box, you have, and that's where all the activities happen.
But we know not long ago, the astronauts were here, right? And that was a cool story. It's like, why are they, that's really cool. And can you honor it by displaying it in, in the air? You know, it's kind of weird that it's on the ground. I know, it's maybe.
I just have a question on signage off of fifteen. We had talked about the idea of a digital billboard or something to that effect that can promote all of the events that are happening at Apollo, something more visible off of fifteen. I love the space castle and I, that's wonderful for the image and brand of Apollo, but an actual, I'm just calling it a digital billboard, but that concept where you can be sharing the events that are going on in the school, that the community can see as they're driving by fifteen.
On the stadium side?
Down fifteen, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did you write that down last time?
I, yeah. But I mean, it's just a...
It's a good idea, because it's right there with the whole stadium complex.
Right.
Right now, the whole school kind of turns its back. This is beautifully, that we've kind of placed ourselves, this is in a virtual model, but you, you see this beautifully, it's on a bridge, like if you drive over the bridge. It's really cool. And we have to, Meg is moving his hand. Thank you, Meg. Any other comments? We have plenty of time.
Are we raising the rope on the school? At one point we talked about like, we raised rope to the side.
Yeah, so in the, that's one of the ideas, what there in the commons is to raise the rope there, because there is no rope. So you're building a taller rope that brings in natural light to the whole commons. And there are other select areas where we're bringing in natural light and doing that same thing.
Also, what are you doing about the underground power line system that feeds Wade Park? There was some discussion about whether they must turn around in that area?
Yeah, you, I think we're gonna be able to, you know, it feels like we're gonna be able to deal with that.
On the diagram, does it really matter at this point, like where the special ed section would be?
Distributed in, no, it doesn't really, but you'll see it in the new school where we're showing. I think it was actually...
I went over that quickly, but there's, there's a space, there's space in there right now. And how it gets distributed, I think that comes out of a detailed program.
Okay.
It's just accommodated right now.
Okay.
Okay. New high school? New high school? Ready? So you remember our choice last time? So David, you're up with?
I'll put the big picture.
The big picture right away. And so we're going to show this and then an axon view.
So there is our latest layout tucked into the site and we're showing it with connection to the proposed park. So you can see there's some little tiny trails right now kind of sneaking across and they're connecting with the proposed trail that's shown here. So there's access back into the three points, there could be more over time, but that's kind of the initial diagram. We wanted to show you this pretty far out shot so we could show you some access points. So one of the proposed access roads is the desired road that we'd like to see would move up to 33rd and through this marcel. It would come down the tree line and then sneak in. And this would be visitor, student parking. The other access point is up at 74, that would be mainly bus, faculty parking in here, bus access and out through there and some loading. The other potential, which we're also showing, is coming in through the south and weaving into the space here. The desired is this, but we wanted to have those options to show.
Oh, we're still watching.
So if you want to click to the axon, I can go through some more of the detail. So there it is, big and bad.
Looks good, Meg.
So one of the things that we wanted to do, looking at the site, you remember last time, there was a lot of wetlands and a lot of trout streamers through here. So there's a lot of environmental sensitivity that we really want to focus on. And so breaking apart some of these parking lots with green spaces in between makes them feel less, you know, like you're going a mile across hard surface to get to where you're going. And you're also allowing for walkways back up into the space. So breaking it up and you're doing different things with it, you're treating water, et cetera. So we broke up the parking lots and we ended up creating this great little tennis sports plaza in the middle here. So we have tennis courts and softball right there, we have baseball right here, and then we have your stadium right here with a great place to gather, pre-game, pre-function right in the center.
I was going to say that this could be lower.
Could be lower, and it's, yeah, when I walked the site last week at 16 degrees.
Let's hear it for David. Thank you.
I walked everything, but there's a great ridge that kind of weaves across right there, which might make it possible to tuck that stadium into the slopes so you could come into it from the top and then have it go down, which would be really cool.
What, where are those up in the north part?
So up here are a couple more baseball fields and three soccer fields.
And there's overlap.
And so there's overlap, same number of fields as Apollo and same number of parking, et cetera, et cetera. So we've got this tucked up real nice into the woods. We have a little, you know, proposed maybe learning amphitheater or something back there against the woods. And we'll have some more trails and everything else weaving through the.
Places to learn, you know, along that edge, seems important.
And even one of the nice things is we were able to fit everything north of this little kind of ravine slash tree line. And we still have property south of that that is unused. The hill goes up a little bit, but that might be something that we look at in the future. This is still all your property that's in reserve. Yes?
Are there spectator stands for that main baseball field?
We're assuming that we'll have for the main baseball field where there'll be some seating and stands.
Do we know the likelihood of utilizing that park that's attached as far as for after-school activities, sports activities, working with the city? Do we have rights to it?
Steve Matt back there, maybe he better answer that question.
Well, we haven't worked out the details, obviously. We're just now understanding how many fields there will be on each side of the creek, but the understanding how long it's been that there would be shared use, but we've heard nothing other than that. So it's just Matt working out the details.
Perfect, thank you. Yes, sir.
So now we've got an H file tracker around the football field. It kind of takes away from some of the intimacy that we had at Hart Field.
Yeah, and you had mentioned, could we take a look at decoupling that? You know, and it is possible. And where we got stuck is, well, is there viewable, how do you view the track again? And there just wasn't time to answer that question. And I know, I know what you're saying, that intimacy that you can create.
Well, it's probably not possible to duplicate that because it is such a unique football field. The other thing is, I like the fact that it's recessed. I don't know how much of an elevation change.
There's about 15 feet right now.
15 feet?
Yeah, it's actually quite a hill. And it's even, over here, it's even deeper. It kind of dives off into a little wetland, which is a pretty steep hill. But yeah, the 15-foot weaves across, but again, it's so broad up there that if you're just looking, you don't see it. But there's enough, and we could pull even more grade in around it to give a nice.
To make a special place there.
It would be similar to Clement's Field at St. Johnson, because they have a recessed football field.
Yeah, there's enough grade difference there to, and you know, we're, it's kind of inspiring what the, you know, kind of thinking of Clark is, let's let that inspire us to kind of get that high level of condition. And we have enough grade and it'd be cool to take it through as baseball, too, you know, depending on atomic or some of those where you get those natural land ones.
And the school would be, there would be some tiers throughout, you know, this could sit at a higher plane and this could be a little bit lower, like depending on how the site ends there.
One more question.
What about the football team said they needed a separate practice field?
And that is a little bit, it's hard to see maybe a little bit, it's posted right here. So that practice field is adjacent right there.
Should we move on? We can come back to it, but.
So again, Mark, as you start to think about what the new school is going to look like, some of the, just the collection and development of images that we find and as well as words that start to reflect what possibly the new school. It's really about site and discovery on the site and opportunities that exist there. We know it's a real biological diverse site as well. There's farmland, there's wetland, there's woodlands, there's piles of granite on the site as well. So it really has not just a biological diversity, but an opportunity as well as for the school and students who may be wanting to engage those environments. But also speaks to textures, different colors on the site as well as how light is out in the field versus in the woodlands and how it tries to transition through the trees. And just the different environments may start to inspire different moves in how we design the space. So that's what it's about, connections, it's really about the prospect of the site and what it offers for not just designing the school, but also kind of program and engaging that site and outdoor learning. So we're going to show, this is a two-story option and it's basically the diagram, we all, woodland diagram that we selected. Again, we have entry coming in through the middle between activity zone and the performance zone and admin right off the entry, so that's secure entry point. It's basically one entry school and you could have a secondary entries if needed, but basically everyone's coming in right down the middle, right into the student commons. And the student commons basically serves as that pre-function for kids as they're coming in during the day, then up to their different learning communities, but as well as for activities for gym and the performance after hours as well.
Do you remember the four designs you created for the new high school with the block exercise? And one of the common things you had, all the solutions had the main entry between the performing and the activity center, entering into the two-story space into the Commons. So this totally reflects that and build on that.
As David mentioned, the services come in from the west, so that's that gray area behind the student commons and sort of that food court space there. And then, so as you come in, then you enter in east or west to either learning community or, and this is a two-story learning community, so there's two-story diagrams. So there's four learning communities on each side. This is showing the first floor. And basically, you can associate a learning community with this yellow box here, which is a staff vibration, so that's one, two, three floor. And each one, and this diagram has an integrated lab space, science, full science lab space within each of those learning communities. So they connect as sort of their individual, but they can also come together and have, create more of a, you know, larger learning community. So it's multi-purpose and informal learning and.
And someone had an idea on the learning communities you designed, do you remember that, about having like theater in the round and the steps? So we took that idea and said, what if we do steps facing each other? And so you get this kind of performance thing going on. And you don't have these separate, but you bring it together so these two come together. So you get these multiple layers of community, one within two together, but then all four together could be one community as well. So that's sort of an interesting idea that you came up with.
Now, in Apollo, you talked about eight learning communities, and now we have four here. Are we talking about the same amount of square footage for the learning community? Or are we at two different levels?
So this is, this is level two. So it's basically the first floor brought up. And what John talked about is, so each of these learning communities has their own informal learning space, but then they come together, all four of them can come together in the center.
So there's eight.
So there's two, four.
Both schools have eight learning communities. Makes sense?
Yeah.
There's an elevator on those times.
So vertical circulation, so you have stairs coming out and then vertical circulation on either side.
That would be distributed. Labs are distributed so they can be served the whole school or the learning community. There's dedicated special ed integrated into the houses, as we had said, or the neighborhoods. The CTC is positioned around the performing arts, so you can create some synergies there. Pretty clean, simple, not too different than it was before, but just fine-tuned. Okay, so that's two-story. And what do we got? So we thought we would take a pass at, again, rendering something that gives an impression or gives the community an idea about what it might feel like to be in the heart of the new high school. And this is what that looks like.
So this is a view, basically from the south, so we're kind of looking north, northeast. But I think what we talked about last time is when we, when we sighted the building sort of up tucked in with the woodlands is, oh, it's a great opportunity to engage that edge of the site, as well as create outdoor learning space and basically create an outdoor room between the building and the woodland edge. But we also wanted to see it, we also want that connection. And so it's really, this space is really about visibility and connections to the outside. So from the north, you have connection to the woodlands and be able to flow out into that outdoor learning space. Then there's the courtyard space, which you're looking out, the majority of this image is looking out at the courtyard space between the activity center and the, it's one of the learning wings. And the ability to flow out, that's kind of nice intimate space where, again, some outdoor learning can happen up there as well. We talked about where are some of the things of, you know, using natural materials, sort of using lots of wood sprinkled throughout, the idea of filtering light as it comes in. So maybe next to your shading device that creates sort of that dappled light effect as, if you're walking the woodlines, it's, you know, that's the light trying to pierce through the leaves on the tree. Those are sort of the ideas from the class there. And again, taller space and a lot more transparency, not like from the inside out, but from space to space and see media resource up above and that transparency and the ability to see learning happen wherever you are within the space.
This feels more like a bridge between the two sides and it opens to the woods below. So it bleeds out through, and so you have this open connection to the woods beyond. Let's go back here.
Yeah, so for the learning communities, is that all it, is that just that section going to be the two levels? Because I see that, that's kind of thrown me off where you were saying with the bridge, just for accessibility?
Oh, no, it's, it's all, yeah, it's all.
Okay, so it's just the learning wings that will be the two levels?
Yeah.
Okay, and how many elevators?
Two.
Two, one on each. I noticed that we're.
Good question, thank you.
I noticed that we're calling it the new high school. Is it being called tech still or? Yes?
I would like to, we did decide to start calling it the new high school. We started to hear feedback that we haven't decided what to do with tech and, you know, if it would remain, keep its name. So we decided to start calling it a new high school and as we explore that. So it could be new tech or it could be tech or.
We had to change over time. One more question, then we're going to finish up.
It's obviously a two-story, eight Commons space, but the roof is flat in pitch or to have a little bit of pitch for the Alex Tower?
Yeah.
That's a detail, yeah, we would collect water and probably collect it to the west side and opposite versus the courtyard side.
How many of you were on the Alex tour? Okay, so Alex is three stories. This is a two-story, so it's going to be more modest in height, a little bit bigger in area, but more modest in height.
Excuse my French, but I like the big ass fans.
Do you want to explain this?
That's what they're called, they're called big ass fans.
And they're awesome, a very sustainable approach to moving here and we need someone, I wish we had someone else.
Yeah.
But thanks for noticing. It's fun to say.
Yeah.
Okay, last part now. We had said, we want to share a three-story option with you, just to make sure, just to make sure. Everything else is the same on the front and the Commons is two stories as well, so the image doesn't change. But the three-story option, I'll just click through and then get it anyway. Same amount of program, right? It's just a little bit more compact, a little bit more compact. And so, essentially, we have more like six houses or six neighborhoods instead of eight. It's, might be a little bit more expensive, two versus three. I don't know if you see the difference, but the wings come in quite a bit. So these spaces are less long and less deep. I don't know if that matters, we're going to ask everybody in. Last time you chose two stories pretty clearly. We just want, we just want you to weigh in again, or touch this again. This is a little bit more compact and there's less surface area. It may make a difference for you, it may not. So I'm just going to go back.
Is there, excuse me, is there a way to determine if there's an efficiency while going three stories operating?
What kind of efficiency?
True operating efficiency, meaning building, lighting building.
Yeah, it's probably going to be, probably going to be fairly unusual thing out of this one, but I don't know anymore. Think about it.
I'd be interested in the staff feedback on whether six houses or eight houses were required for them.
Okay. So we're going to ask you to comment, does it matter? Do you, what do you think about when you look at the two versus three? Is it, is it negative? You're going to do it at tables. Okay, I think we have to jump in. So, table talk.
Can we have one question? With the two different approaches into the property, is there discussion in the city about having a controlled intersection of the car road, the white road, the white road and having space to be able to communicate in directions in a state format out there?
We haven't got quite that, Maria, but I'm glad to bring that up because understanding some of the challenges here at this school and seeing how that can play out there on something that's definitely on the list to check out.
Yeah, because I would like to see controlled intersection of the car road, the white road,
So I would like to see controlled intersections right up front with left and right turn lanes and separate straight lanes instead of only two lanes that go left and right and straight. And wide enough length goals to have that influx of traffic, whether it's for school, after school, during sporting events, art exhibition, conference event, graduation. And you've got a lot of other areas that are in there.
Those are all great. Thank you.
Okay. There's one more and then...
Is there any economical advantage of shrinking the, what kind of the wing wings and going up versus spreading it out and going to two stories? I mean, is construction cost-wise cheaper to go up than it is to create a larger footprint?
But it could be offset by, there are some smoke evacuation things when you go three stories that get complicated. So if, if money was no object, let's just, let's just say that. If money was no object, does it matter? The feedback we want from you as a community is, is two or three, does it matter? Or maybe you have no opinion. Or maybe it's just whatever's cheaper. Okay? Does that make sense?
You know, I think a two-story would be cheaper, even if we put a bargain from the code standpoint.
From a code standpoint, it brings in some challenges, but we did it in Alex, so it's okay. Which is our price point.
Sean, we got to get going here. We're going to have...
Okay.
I have a quick question. The picture only showed a very large gym and then a small gym. I'm guessing there was another one?
Yeah, it's a three station.
Could you tell me Tech's gymnasium right now sideways? How does that compare to what we're looking at here?
Check this through. So it's additional.
Just the main gym size is what's... So the picture that we're seeing there is, see, gym and gym.
Yeah, it's three gyms. And so the things come down and there's a...
Okay. So is that the main gym size as Tech has now? We're not gaining any...
Does anybody know that?
Tech has three gyms and an auxiliary.
And a center court, so it's the same.
So we're not gaining any gym space.
Yeah, but those weight, those gyms, those gyms of the basketball courts on the, either side of the main gym are pretty tight. So you're probably looking at a little larger gym here than we do at Tech.
Well, because I'm just wondering where the gymnastics room is going. Where's the dance going? Because the gymnastics room at Tech right now has a gymnastics room. They can't compete in it. Where are they causing?
That I want you to write in comment on. Because we heard the comment before about the same thing.
Dance.
Okay. Yeah. So we have some stuff to work through. So here are your questions, right? And we're at the third end. And we need to get your report out by, like, in 20 minutes. So we're going to give you 10 minutes to do some table talk. 10, 15 minutes. What do you find compelling? These are the questions. You can, what do you find compelling? Do you have any big concerns? Do you prefer the two or three story care? And then do you have a compelling story to share that will help build community support? Do you have a compelling story to share? And that might come afterwards or later. But we're heading into, we're transitioning now into a bigger effort to share design ideas with the community. Just think about what's compelling.
About both schools?
About the, yeah, about both schools or...
About the high schools?
Yeah. About what? About the high school solution? We have designed the high school solution, for example. Makes sense? Okay. Pencils down. Pencils down. Do we have the mic? If you want to distribute that. Do we have a table who would like to go first? If you know the routine or your report out?
There's some.
Um, here?
Okay. Here's our list of compelling things. We liked Apollo making it more visible and the rebranding in and out. We love the Space Capsule. And talked about the fact that I think the astronauts donated their spacesuits too, so maybe it could be a display of those somewhere. I think so. Am I right about that?
I'm not supposed to be getting the jacket or jacket.
The jacket. That's something pretty cool. We also had a fantastic idea over here. Allison was talking about using that space in the front to name the students' artwork and display that with the windows. So when you came into Apollo, you would see all of our talented artists today. Trees breaking up in parking lots, we like that. The Discovery Center at Apollo, that was a really cool idea because the space was unused. Equity instructional spaces, we really liked that. That idea of those stairs in the two-story design at the new high school. And then also all of the natural light, we really liked.
Cool.
Our concerns. Our concerns were, we have that opportunity to utilize a larger performance space and we thought that we should take advantage of that. Not necessarily equity in every single area. The pay that Apollo has a theater at seven hundred and Tech has a little bit of a larger pay. We thought it was a really exciting opportunity to host community events. Competitions like CLC, like you post a CLC competition, Industry of Seven Forty-Two, if we have a larger space to do it. It's an opportunity also for schools to join together for concerts as well. Enough designated space for all activities was something we talked about. So the sports and the activities, making sure they all have a space for their performances, for their practices, and their competitions. And also making sure that we have enough classroom space for all teachers to have their own spaces. And we like the two-story design.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Our group also voted for the two-story model. I don't think I voted neatly as this table did, but compelling, we listed beautiful site and buildings, updated modern, twenty-first century, an educational focus tied to our mission, strategic thinking. Nature, accessibility and elevators are key in the new school. Making sure we get key to opportunity to engage our community. We thought that was very compelling and that we get to highlight the strengths of the stories of our schools. Concerns that we listed or opportunity areas, as I like to say, are to ensure the bus routes are carefully planned, keep in mind cars pick up and drop off. St. Paul residents that don't have kids in school, helping them understand the concepts. For our city sports, really talking to the coaches, making sure the needs of all sports and activities are met and talking with teachers about their needs and making sure their needs are incorporated into the designs. CTE, more space for vocational education, signage and money for the billboards. Making sure that we build that in ahead of time and so we can rule on all the events going on at the schools. That would apply to both schools. Making sure that we're not only focused on sports and performing arts, but focused on education as well. And the stair concept, safe for us, but is the full realistic. So we just want to have the experts take a look at the stair concept. And then, as far as the story for our community goes, a couple of the talking points we have there are to really play up caring about the future of our community. Anyone that cares about this community would, could be excited for our high school solution, whether you have kids in school or not. It's really about Central Minnesota and our St. Paul area schools and the future of our really having an education support. These schools are really making sure our students are prepared for the future, paying it forward. If you have grandkids getting ready to go through the schools, this is preparing them for the future. And really asking ourselves, how did our forefathers plan to build schools for us? Someone built schools for us. So we, in turn, want to make sure that we're doing that for our children. And as far as St. Paul goes as a destination, we want to draw people to move here and encourage families to stay here.
Thank you.
Great. We said, what, do we find compelling? We talked about the great entryways at both schools. Just very inviting, very welcoming, very prominent. Brand, we love the branding of the building here at Apollo with the Space Capsule. Just really made it welcoming, but also that innovation. The outdoor fields at Tech, just beautiful layout. The grounds and campus at Tech, incorporating the different areas. Two-story, we really like the two-story facing stairs, just for competitions, but for presentations. We love the Discovery Lab here. Wondering if it can be duplicated at the new high school. And then, as the other group got enough space for current tech, out of both buildings, there was concern about that. It wasn't voiced by me. I just want to share that. Ensuring that programming and space to meet the world's best workforce and local labor market needs at both buildings are really servicing our students to grow our talent. The soccer fields and baseball fields at Tech, was there an overlap that looked like maybe safety or fences that would go between so that the ball would come in the middle of your field going back and forth? And then how will the community be brought into the schools? Potential partnerships, shared spaces? How can we make sure it's both a given and take for all, which will also impact the compelling story? We, uh, it was a five to zero on the two-story.
Awesome.
Okay. Well, we started with that we voted, we liked this two-story one too. We just felt it was more flexible and capable to be used in different ways. We're kind of all over the place. I thought we, you know, we didn't do this logically like you did. We, yes, so we're a random bunch of people. But we really liked the outdoors, the possibility of the outdoor labs and fitness. That's compelling as, as a new school. There's the sustainability features, you know, natural water, biodiversity or biology science, all that. And I think that I would like to see those kinds of features also at Apollo. I don't know why you couldn't add that as part of it. So when we talked about the performance space, we were concerned about seven hundred to a thousand would sometimes be really large also. And so we wondered if there's a way of putting a black box theater or using, you know, could the, sorry, could the bathroom also double as a black box theater or something? Or is there like a multipurpose?
Whatever is correct.
Enjoy that. So that you can have an intimate, there's nothing that kills a dorm is more than an empty room. We were looking at, you know, the question is how the flexible labs will work. We're a little, sometimes a little stymied on that, but trusting the designers and staff. The same question then, can the CTE space be flexible? You know, is it always about a lab or can it be something else as well or, you know, whatever that is? We want to leverage our partnering opportunities and including the E-14 partners. Let's see. We really love the stairs. We love the outdoor amphitheater in the new building. At Apollo, we were loving the Discovery Center, the commons and the Space Capsule in the sky.
Awesome. Thank you. Next group, the highlights now.
Okay. Keep it sharp. Love the entrances to Apollo, rendering that. Love the flow, the commons, the stages in the houses was good. But we wondered if it was going to be something that would last a long time and continue to be used, or is it something that might be more flexible, flexible or something along those lines? Talked about the Apollo main entrance. That question could have been on the north side and just looking at that. A big one was need staff input, not only in the configuration of these learning areas, but also in the training of us teachers. As a teacher coming in, looking at this, we're looking at a model that does not reflect what we are doing currently in this district. And that is going to be a huge heritage of change for us, so we need to address that. The new school rendering for the ceiling seemed industrial and the new school, just corrugated or whatever, and it was just a rendering. We're a two-story. And our compelling story was simply that the new school is a home, is a single space, a community for all of our events. We are so spread out right now, we do not have that.
That's nice. Thank you. Thank you for modeling a short report. Awesome. Pressure's on.
What we found compelling too was we liked the Apollo entrance design, that the architects listened to everybody's ideas with light and space, that both schools are equitable. Big concern is parking. You know, having enough space for all the activities. And Elizabeth mentioned too, the driving, the turn lanes and having the road wide enough and that. Good signage for both schools. Developing the design for the CTE space, what will be there and how we use it. Flexibility with gyms for all the different activities, the dance, the gymnastics, the sports, whatever. The locker room usage, if there's multiple events, if there are tracks to meet going on the same time as well as soccer or whatever. How do those, this is at the new school, is the locker room, use there as their locker space outside, therefore the football court is. Having paved paths between the schools and Mina Creek and separate walking and wheel space, whatever your wheels would be. Also having an indoor walking track and a field, and/or a field house, so when the weather is inclement, so like in Minnesota, they can sit and practice. If you go with a larger theater, just make sure that it's accessible on all levels for those folks that can go up to the balcony space. And then to a three-story, we weren't, you know, one way or the other, just that if you needed to expand, you could either go up or out. And then what the operating costs are for, you know, heating, cooling, lighting, all those things.
Thank you.
One of the joys of being the last group. We're not, everything was pretty much said that we went over, so I'm not going to restate as, even though I like to listen to myself talk, you guys hear me.
See, summarize at this point.
Just the two things that weren't covered as far as our two-story vote table. Two things that weren't covered were concerns regarding a community high schools and having productions and tournaments when they're done late at night, having access to the entire facility. So are there ways that we can limit accessibility to just those designated areas? And then since we're building school for our children and children's children, looking at future growth, whether that would be a third from an architectural or structure standpoint, being a third level and or growing at both, both sites. So not necessarily looking at just immediate needs, but also future development.
Awesome. Thank you. Wow. Thank you for moving through that feedback quickly. If I, if there, if you could like that on a two or three-story scheme in Vegas right now, I'd put your money on a two-story. But it's so interesting to see that kind of coming down, come on, over and over again. So what I want to do now is, thank you from the design team. We want to thank you from the bottom of our heart for engaging with us and doing such a wonderful job for these seven workshops and all the time we've spent. It's been amazing. We have trees in the back. We're going to have about five minutes to get up and go around.
Do you want to put up our next steps?
I'm going to. But before we do that, now I said that we were going to get a team together to make the presentation. I think that's just going to be too much. So we'll do a quick presentation to the board in the next half hour. And we'll run through it very quickly what we just did. We'd like you to stick around for questions and engage in a, in the conversation, if at all possible. I'd like to turn it over to the panelists to introduce a very important person who's going to be critical to the next steps.
Yeah. So stepping forward from our community are Barclay Carrier and Debbie Erickson to begin the community process of the levy, part of, you know, the next steps. And so I just wanted to introduce Debbie. And if you have a couple of words to say to us?
I do, I wanted to, I think, you know, as I...
Maybe, I was wondering if you could provide your information next to Mary and then if you have a school affiliation or if there's a specific role that you're interested in taking or if you just want more information about what the roles are, I will be happy to jump to you and discuss where you're gonna fit this couple. But thank you for being part of this process and forward working on it.
Can I say something to conjunction with what Debbie was saying? This is Debbie, this is something you and I spoke about earlier. Knowing that our referendum is moving to the fall, we don't have, we have a little more time than what we had before, but we also have a great opportunity. Coming May and into June, we have graduations and concerts at every single grade at every single school. How many of us are gonna go to those? How many of us are gonna have our neighbors come to those? Those are the events that we need to start talking to the community. It's a free ad really to get in there and be at every fifth grade concert and every kindergarten concert, because those are the students that are gonna be in these schools that we are building today for them. So I ask that everyone be part of this group that Debbie's coordinating and step up now to start working in those schools. In addition to that, work with your employer. I work at the St. Cloud Hospital, how huge of an employer is that? I got the name of the person who runs the foundation and I will be either calling, writing an email or setting up something with him and saying, hey, we need to get the foundation on board for this because not only are you supporting your employees, they're kids, your future employees. So I just want to share that with everybody.
Thank you, wonderful. Okay, so thank you again. Give yourselves a round of applause. Stick around, please get up and have some, we have some cookies.